And so they were just, and then they have new officers. Mary Jo Hamling is the new president of the Friends. Keeping over broadly, Marty. So anyway, it was, it was really a nice little get together. And thank you for bringing that up.
So if we can find where to attend that, would that have been considered a form?
You have good things out there.
Because I was thinking.
Um, is it my turn?
It is your turn.
Okay. The library board met on October seventeenth. We did talk about the Friends of the Library social. It was very exciting and I'm glad it was very well attended. I got to celebrate my child's birthday that day. So I'm really glad that there were multiple commissioners there to show their support. The library received a donation for some nonfiction youth materials and books. And they are looking to probably do a budget amendment. So that will be coming down the pipe, Nikki. We will need your help with that to make sure that we do that correctly. Okay. I'd like to note that Alyssa is working very hard to make the year-to-year statistics that the library gathers for both the city as well as the state. She's created a very lovely dashboard for those statistics. So it's easy to read and easy to see. And I'm really excited that she's taken the time to do that. During our recent meeting, Carrie from the Central Montana Foundation came and had a very extensive talk with the library board about the multiple, what are they called? Funds that we have with the Central Montana Foundation, how those can grow and how those could be utilized if we do building improvements. And so that was a really, really informative and good talk. And then the library has a building committee and they meet every now and then, I wouldn't say on a regular basis. But we're hoping to ask Holly to see if you'd like to be a part of that building committee. It'd be really important, as the library is a city building, that we have constant city input in that committee to make sure that the improvements go along with what the city is hoping for. And we continued our discussions about the upcoming MOU and what kind of additions, revisions, or things that we need to take out. So that was our meeting.
Thank you. I think you're quiet. And we have a Central Montana Foundation meeting tomorrow at 2:00 P.M. Okay, city manager.
Yes, recently this city representative met with a whole bunch of different folks. Vodcom was in town. They gave us a date on their project, which is outside the city limits. And also there are members of the airport properties. Joel Almida, who is the Berg Lumber developer, was in town and also visited with Doug and I. And there are several other developers looking, both residential and commercial. Many of these projects are in the planning phases. And we do anticipate proceeding with kind of the plans and next kind of documents that can get them started in early 2025. So that looks like it will be a busy year for the building department and planning department. This city is starting to transition to electronic time cards. So right now we're using a program that this, right now our capacity is just clock in and clock out. Just trying to get in the habit of that. And then we will slowly start integrating that into our payroll system. The hopes is that for the first of the year, we'll have that integration complete and be able to do paperless, time, time sheets. And so that's been an interesting process.
What's the system called?
So the system we're using is TimeCox Plus. It's the same as the county and the school district's. The State Resource Commission still does have a few books left. They're fairly limited at this point, but they are $25. They're available for sale at the city office. The museum has some, several downtown businesses. Oxley Mountain, places like that have them. They make great gifts. So it's getting to be that time of year. And then also the State Resource Commission has been working on another project that they call the Living History Project. And this project kind of integrates the walking tour and this virtual, where people can, you know, walk down the street. And even if the business is closed, they can scan a QR code and access online pamphlets and things like that. So at this time, there's about six businesses or buildings that were picked. And we are getting close to having the first one done. And everybody else hopefully will have it to kind of go for the first few years. So that's been a long time coming. But kind of a neat integration to this, both like in person, they'll have plaques, you know, outside of the buildings. And then an option for people to scan and get more information. As the election season approaches, reminders on our sign permit and our sign codes. Temporary signs are exempt from our permit. They cannot be placed in the public right of way and require that they be removed right after the completion of the activity. And so temporary signs are real estate signs, yard sale signage, and also elections signage.
Holly, does that include like on the main street signs in the windows? Or is that considered like, like a property? How does that work?
So window signs are, there is specific requirements and stuff like that. I think probably like the election or a, like a real estate type signage would fall under that. But if it's, you know, the open and some of that, so those are completely a separate thing. Those are like a mandatory sign. If they're specific, people want to ask. And then the Public Works Department will start their leak cleanup. It is online in the newspaper or, or will be going out in the newspaper. The start date is November fourth for that. But we do also have the compost bin available at the wastewater treatment plant. People can do that in a tide. And we do ask that people not pile their leaks into the street too early because they blow down to the neighbors or grass rains on a night like this. And then last, but certainly not least, our meets, both in campers. It's that time of year again where they are not allowed on the streets after November first. Again, the police department has been working hard on complaints and addressing current issues. But prior to winter is always a good time to get those large trailers off the streets so that we can remove snow. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Holly? Moving on to public comments, is there any comment on non-agenda items? Yes, sir. Could you please stand and say your name?
Yeah, my name is Bill Ballis. I'm a resident of Lewis Town, vice chair of the Big Spring Creek Watership Council. And our little group, I've got a few folks with me tonight. Ashley Brea, Matt Hayes, Hidj Maycock, and myself. We voted last week unanimously at our meeting to attend this city council meeting. We've written two letters to the city. One in June and the other one in April regarding the wastewater treatment plant and the issues there. And we'd just really like to engage with you folks, get some of these issues resolved. As you know, there's been two instances during high water where there's been sewage that's gone to Big Spring Creek. And I don't think there's anybody in this room that thinks that's acceptable. We're here to work with you to, whether it's give grants or whatever, to remedy that situation. We'd like to understand what the plan is going forward. Currently, the DEQ has identified issues and violations that would occur fines of $10,000 a day, not to exceed $100,000. That's a lot of money. And we're concerned about that. We'd like to request a copy of the city's response to the March 22nd DEQ violation letter. And thank you for, number one, including the council. In the planning document, there's a couple of areas that you've identified and recognize the Watership Council to be involved in the growth plan that you approved. We really appreciate your efforts in giving the $3 million Marpa grant. One of our concerns is we understand that that $3 million may only address 30% of the issues and violations. We'd like to understand more about that. We'd like to request a water plant tour with the city commission and the Watership Council at the plant to understand more of what's going on down there. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions of me or?
I don't know if we can address everything.
If you, yeah, so we have tried to get a small committee, create a couple of little working groups. One for the concerns at the wastewater facility and the other for the concerns at Berg Lumber. If you guys can come up with three members or something like that. I know Clint had sent out some doodles and I don't think that they probably got enough participation to set a meeting date. But I know that we are trying to get time set up. So if you have contacts and stuff, feel free. Also, if you guys stop into the city office and make that request, we can get you that paperwork.
Yeah, we'd love to.
I move, do you have a question?
No, I'm okay. I think that was the answer.
I know that I asked a few months ago to invite the Watership Council to maybe use a committee of the whole to present and open that dialogue. And maybe from that committee of the whole, we could identify committee members. Because it may be easier to do it then.
I've also reached out to DEQ, which they've offered. I've had multiple conversations with them, with management, with bureau chiefs. And they offered to attend a meeting as well.
I think that could be a very good use of a committee of the whole, actually spend some time and discuss.
Yeah, it might be better just for everybody to be all in the room together. We don't know quite yet how, I don't want to take up the November fourth meeting. That would be our first.
Correct.
Fourth and eighth.
So if you give us some contacts, that would be great.
Yeah, and what we'll try to do is, so before these meetings at seven, we have what's called Committee of the Whole and it's from six to seven. And usually it's like an open time for a specific topic. And we're just discussing here that that might be the best use of everybody's time is if you, your group came, possibly we could get some people from DEQ and the commission and have this discussion instead of me off, off that time. So at this point, if we could try to arrange, it would be either the fourth, November fourth or November eighteenth. Are those the two dates?
And I have offered up both of those dates to the DEQ and I haven't heard that.
Okay, so. Yeah, and then, and then we can all be in the same room and have these conversations and knock out all your questions and stuff, but go ahead.
Did the city send a response letter to the DEQ?
You guys have seen the response.
Yeah. Maybe they could have a copy of that so they at least know we're moving on something.
If they come into the office, we can get them a copy of that.
So we did respond to them. We're working on that.
You offered tours of the facility. I know that I have never been down to the water treatment facility in rain as not also. I find it very valuable to visit the facility before we meet so that I can have an understanding of what actually is going on down there. If I'm naive in that arena.
And the weather is.
Perfect.
So maybe we could do a small.
Some of us have seen that, so.
Everybody else, Tim, probably not you, but I know since Kellyanne's been on the weekend.
Yeah, and you, you kind of missed that meeting, so.
So if we can figure out when it will appear on Committee of the Whole, then me and Lorraine and Tim, I don't know if you're interested, could schedule a meeting.
And anybody who, maybe we could pass just a little, a couple of different times.
Yep.
Can we be included with this?
Yes.
Give us your contacts.
Yeah, contact information to Holly and then you can kind of put all this together and look at November as being a time of wastewater.
Treatment facility.
That makes sense.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, does anybody have anything else?
Just addressing where the biostals might have moved out of the pipeline.
And we did get a map, but you can go through that with us.
All right, thank you. I think we're going to excuse her.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, is there any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Acknowledgement of the claims that have been paid from October first to October seventeenth for a total of $897,128.2. Does anybody have any questions on claims?
I have one question. I was just curious, because I know that Frank Sander does a lot of the practice maintenance. How, how, is he paid like by season?
It's monthly. We have a contract, it's an annual contract. We divide it out amongst twelve months and pay the same amount, garbage each month.
Each month, correct. And he's not year-round, is he, correct?
He does some year-round, so. No removal, garbage removal, stuff like that. It's clearly laid out in the contract.
Yeah, he gets, he doesn't get paid like monthly in the summer. It's like every.
It's still monthly, but the same amount summer or winter.
And is he under an independent contract, correct? Okay, any other questions?
So just probably more for Dicky. The final tally on the water tank, which looks marvelous, by the way. That, what, that came out of the water budget?
Yeah, other than the water flood.
Okay. And that's something, I guess, hasn't been put away a little bit every year?
It was, yeah. Stuff that, I mean, we had no payments or anything like that. And so we had set aside capital improvement money.
Any grant work involved in that $800,000 bucks?
Not on that.
Okay, thank you.
It does look good.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for all claims that have been paid from October first to October seventeenth of this year.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Day, second by Commissioner Bueller to acknowledge the claims. All those are there with these regular items. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. Discussion and action on approving the 2024-2025 School District Number One Recreation Agreement. Holly?
Yeah, so before you, you have the recreation agreement with the school district. We went kind of what used to be a civic center agreement and changed it to a more general recreation facilities agreement. So you can see it covers a whole bunch of other programs. But basketball, volleyball, soccer, softball, badminton, snowshoeing, pickleball, swimming, cross country skiing, and table tennis. Though I don't know that we do table tennis currently. But it just kind of outlines how that has worked. You know, that they pay us a nominal fee. Again, it does go up by CPI. And I know that the usage of the civic center has changed a little bit with the addition of the Lewis and Clark Gym. But we still feel that they're utilizing the civic center for practices and our other facilities for, you know, whether softball, girls softball, or the FrogCon. I mean, they're utilizing a lot of our different recreational facilities. And so that's why that amount did go up again this year by $246. For CPI.
So with that new gym, that still showed the increase because of the last annual idea of CPI.
Correct, yeah. And, I mean, Kelly can talk to you, kind of beginning of the season, she met with the athletic director and went over, they had scheduled some tournaments. And then a lot of the junior high games were moved to the Lewis and Clark Gym. But we still did set aside time and pretty much all the practices for junior high are happening.
And we've added, like adding those other activities such as pickleball. Just last week, we had, you know, a group in from the school with a mentor and mentee program that played pickleball and taught lessons. And so it's like, you know, it shifted a tiny bit. I would say primarily with volleyball because of our seating situation. Most, almost every but one home junior high basketball game is still at the civic center. So volleyball's a little trickier because our bleachers, how they come out, it prevents us from being able to have two courts. And so a lot of those games, yeah, and height of the ceiling. A lot of the volleyball games did move to the new facility. But then it seems like we're just adding other things, practices every day at the civic center. And then, like I said, most of the basketball games will remain at the civic center.
Well, and the whole reason we needed the new shot clock was to kind of accommodate the school.
I would assume that, you know, you're going to kind of need a couple of years to really figure out the use at the civic center versus the use of the, you know, you can't just kind of, with a crystal ball and figure it out and, yeah, cut it off. I mean, you kind of need to just, you know, go through a year or two and kind of figure out how each space is used.
Is there any way to do maybe a report out, a yearly report out of maybe the usage last year without Lewis and Clark Gym and maybe reporting this upcoming year, maybe later in the year?
Yeah, and kind of look at those numbers so that we know the usage.
I was there for most of the programs last year in a different capacity. So I think I kind of could just give you a ballpark of that. And for sure, to get a report for you.
Thanks.
I'm going to adjourn motion on this agreement.
I just have one more question. Is Paul Bartosz still the activities director of the high school?
Yes, yes.
And is the, I have another question. Is the school aware of the amount that we're requesting? They're, they've seen the document.
And Rebecca and I have been in communication. She'll take it through her board. She was asked to review all of the contracts they have too. So there is a chance that it comes back to us from the discussion.
I think, I think it's a well-given tape too. I know that when the football field was underwater, they called and they were like, can we use the city park to have a practice? And, you know, I think we have a great relationship with the school district in that we open up spaces that they may not have available to them and try to work together to make sure we facilitate everything for the kids in our community. So hopefully, I think, I think they should be on board. Especially, like I said last week, we didn't have maybe a game there, but we had pickleball instead. So that's fairly new. I mean, like, you won't think when they were putting the plans together for Lewis and Clark, they were, we really needed the pickleball.
Right.
About that.
And now it's about.
I doubt.
Okay, I'd just like to see more information from the radio and newspaper on the cooperation between the schools and the cities. Because I think the people out there may not have a real clear idea. We're looking at $6,300, which is chicken feed, if you would know. But I, I see it as being very beneficial for everybody having a happy face with that stuff, like helping out when the football field was flooded.
Absolutely.
Okay, that helps the school pass mill levies, which we need for the kids and other things. So if, if we could do that, that'd be great. To let the people know all these good things that we're working on. Thank you. Glad you used the microphone.
We heard you.
I move that we approve the 2024-2025 School District Number One Recreation Agreement.
Well, second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bueller, second by Commissioner Day. Is there any comments from the public? Any other comments or questions from the commission? Let's do a roll call vote, okay? Since it's an agreement.
We are approving the 2024-2025 School District Number One Recreation Agreement. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Spica?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, discussion on possible changes of the civic center. Holly?
Yes, so at our tour, we talked a lot about different things. Kelly is moving forward on a couple of different projects. She's had some struggles with vandalism and different things over the last couple of weeks. And so because we had the civic center agreement, we thought it was a great opportunity for her just to give us a brief rundown on, you know, what has happened since we met through the facility.
So as Holly mentioned, which thanks for having me to speak. As she mentioned, we've had some vandalism, several acts of vandalism unfortunately between Creepside, the civic center, and Frank Day Park, the shelter houses. And it's discouraging and frustrating because many of the kids have been identified and they are very young, elementary age. And that's a concern, you know, that we have kids kind of running around doing that when they're very young. So I guess that takes me into why I feel it's very important that we create a safe space for kids to be productive rather than, you know, creating chaos in our community. I've seen for the past year that I've been at the civic center that we have a lot of lost kids in our community. And I'm not justifying vandalism by any means. And I feel that we definitely need to be proactive and request some restitution because they need to be held accountable. It's city property and taxpayer dollars that go into these wonderful spaces that we're so fortunate to have in Lewis Town. However, I see these kids and they're just kind of sitting in the side room. You know, some of them have phones, some of them don't. There's nothing for them to do. If the gym is being utilized for practices or, you know, it's rented for other functions, they just sit there. And some of them sit there all day long. And so it became very clear to me that we needed to amp up a space, a youth and rec room and kind of family room, so to speak, for our community. I think it will just benefit everyone in the community if we have a space for these kids. And sometimes it's not even kids. We have Special Olympics practice every week at the civic center and they come a couple hours early and hang out. And, you know, the only thing we really have in there was a pool table. So we did vote at the last park board meeting to take out the claw machines, which as one park board member called them, the gambling for, for kids in the civic center. Those are gone. And we're looking at potentially getting some type of like a snack type vending machine rather than just pop with some healthy snacks. I went on Facebook, obviously funding is a challenge always. And this wasn't something that, I haven't been there very long. So I went to J C's and asked J C's and wrote up kind of a proposal to ask if they would be interested in helping out with some of the youth programs and this youth rec room and, you know, some of the ideas that I have. And they were super excited about it. They didn't have enough people in their last meeting for a forum. So they're going to vote on it hopefully next month. But it's something that they were hoping to get behind. And we're hosting a Halloween run on November first with the proceeds from that hopefully going and back into getting some of the things we need. Also went on to Facebook and just kind of said, hey, if you have a used chair or some used kids games or books. And I've been amazed at how many people have stopped by. So we got a very lovely couch donated today. And it was kind of neat. I mean, we had a kid that is developmentally delayed in our community that kind of hangs out at the civic center. And he played some pool and he was hanging out on the couch. and he was hanging out on the couch listening to music, and it just was a good feeling to be able to provide that space for him. So that's kind of what we have going on there. And I guess the vandalism thing, I think we have a good handle on it. I hear from the police department, there's a surge every year in vandalism in the fall. So it sounds like it's nothing new, but I'd like to nip it in the butt, so to speak. So there's, you know, kind of, and then as far as programs go, I guess, at the Civic Center, we obviously don't have the roller skating anymore, which is a huge disappointment to people, and we get a call about it almost every week. And so I've been wrapping my brain, as a former recreation director, and my focus in Gillette was youth, actually. I was thinking, what kind of projects, what kind of programs could we bring for something for the kids in our community or families to do? And so one, one thing we found that some of the other rec centers around the state were doing was like glow-in-the-dark dodgeball, just fun. You know, you have music, you have, it's similar to roller skating, and that's just kind of a fun Friday night activity. So that was one of the things that I talked to J C's about also, was helping to potentially fund that because they had reached out to me early in the summer that they were interested in funding some type of youth program or youth activities. And so, talked to them a little bit about that. It's been, I've had a lot of ideas thrown out, out at me, I won't go over them all tonight, but I think if anything we can do to give the kids in our community, families in our community, something to do and serve the community, you know, at the Civic Center is, is the goal right now in my focus. Any questions on that?
I was wondering, like, if that's something, is the newspaper already involved with posting that program? Because I do think that's a great opportunity.
I was actually gonna send a flyer over to, yeah. We, I was struggling finding dates, and then Luke Brandon, who was a park board member, came to me, and he wanted to get the key club involved, and he was pretty excited about the idea. And honestly, he's a school teacher, so I think he was kind of excited about the idea of fixing up that rec room at the Civic Center. So he's really like thrown himself behind it and said, hey, let's do it the day after Halloween, because I was thinking before in my brain, like I was thinking it has to be before Halloween, but we're gonna do it the Friday after, and just kind of finalized and got the flyer out there. It's been shared a ton on Facebook. So hopefully, I mean, if it's not huge this year, I think it's just another fun thing for our community that will maybe grow or we can build on each year, and another way to utilize our awesome trail system. Which is never a bad thing.
I'd like to also note that we used the shelter space at the Frank Day Park for my son's birthday, and it was a really awesome opportunity. There had been some vandalism the night before, and we went down to check it out, and there were already people down there cleaning it up and getting it ready. And the facility looks clean, it's very nice to use. It was a wonderful space, and you guys are working really hard to make sure that the, the facilities just look the best they can. We really appreciate that.
I appreciate you saying that. And I'll add, I'm very happy that you've taken out the claw machines at.
That was a very simple vote for the park board, basically.
Support justice, and it was, I full support on that.
Two questions for you.
Yes.
I must be behind the question. Why is there no roller skating anymore?
So our courts have gotten very thin over the years from all I use and a lot of roller skating. And they refinished them and, you know, covered, I mean, waxed them many, many times. But it got to the point where they're so thin that when you add that many people on roller skates, we have nails come up through the floor. And the cost, it's just not cost prohibitive to roller skate and then replace that entire gym floor, I think, at this time for the city.
And we could not get staff.
And then that was, yeah, part two of that, and I just talked to Lori Berg about that today because we have someone that's interested in purchasing the roller skates from another entity, another city entity, but she said it was very, very, very hard to staff it because you need quite a few people there, it can get pretty rowdy, you know, when you have that many people on roller skates.
Oh, let's remember.
Yeah.
My kids are rowdy.
Yeah, so.
Just was curious, because it seems like, I, I'm not against the dodgeball, but it seems a pretty different audience.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you thought about a budget for this youth facility?
I did create a very, I would call it a very basic budget, where I got some ballpark figures, and I submitted that to J C's. And we have gotten some of the items on that list donated, like couches. And the library, I think, is going to donate a chair that they no longer need, and maybe a mobile book station. Alyssa's been awesome, she's really supportive and helpful. So some of the items on that list, maybe Nolan Boyd before all said and done, but I do have kind of a rough.
Sure, maybe share with us.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Okay, the next item, discussion and action on approving resolution number four one seven five, a resolution stating your intention of the city commission to amend the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget of the city of Lewis Town.
This is a redo of the one we did last time, we could not meet the public hearing requirements, and so we had to push back another lady. And so this is the intent to set a budget amendment hearing for the first meeting in November, and it is being advertised.
I move to approve resolution forty-one thirty-nine.
Second?
It's a move by Commissioner Speaker, second by Commissioner Bueller. Is there any questions, comments from the public?
Question, yes.
Yeah.
Question. So, did we get the specific notes and where these events are?
We have not yet.
The notes?
Nikki knows them, but that will be part of the actual resolution, the budget amendment resolution. This is just the notice part.
So the notes will be discussed on that?
Correct, yeah.
Any other comments?
Do a roll call vote.
Okay. We are approving resolution number four one seven five, a resolution stating the intention of the city commission to amend the twenty-four, twenty-five budget of the city of Lewis Town. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Ro, Rube, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, discussion on the twenty twenty-three audit. I believe you handed out the corrective plan?
Yep, so at the last meeting, you got the findings. This is the corrective action plan. There was also, they asked for some additional information, and so there was a couple items that we resubmitted that provided further detail on, I think, maybe three or four items, and then their acceptance of that corrective action plan, so. So do you want to go over the corrective action?
I think that would be good, we'll do that.
So, and I'm gonna kind of incorporate the revised. So the only place that I'll dump is to the second one is where there weren't, were fifteen steps. So item one was separation of duties. Again, our office is small, we separate it the best we can. You know, people that seek money on a daily basis don't, balance batches, Nikki does the deposits, things like that. And so we do the best we can. That is one that, just based on our size of our organization, it's, I've been told it's always gonna be there. And so it's not a material finding, it's just a limiting factor of our size, so. Same with number two. And so, I have tried to figure this out for a long, long time. But currently, we have our auditors prepare our financial statement. Again, we don't have on staff CPA, and so it really doesn't make sense that we would utilize anything else but our auditors that are closing our books and doing that stuff anyway. To do that, again, it's really a not material item. It's just limited by the qualifications of our staff and the size of our office.
Can you just give me some clarification? Like, or, I'm guessing government and county is complex?
Completely backwards, like regular accounting, yeah.
Okay.
Well, there are very few firms that will do it, really none of the local CPA type folks are necessarily government accounting experts.
And just like, well, the accounting degrees don't learn enough to be able to do that.
They would have to specialize in that. It's only one class in college.
Are there people that we contract out that we could contract?
A separate auditor or attorney?
Yes.
I'm sure we could probably not, because they can't even get auditors to do it right now.
So it's not that we can't, it's that there is a scarcity of those individuals.
But it, it means you could look into it.
Yeah.
The, and. At this time, I mean, even trying to get proposals from auditing firms this last time was very difficult because through mergers and retirements and stuff like that, there's less and less options available. And a lot of people that are needing those services because every municipality our size requires an annual audit, the smaller ones don't. But class one and class two cities. Which is, I think it's about seventy.
I'm sorry, for what?
In the state, how many cities do you recall? Or one, two?
One or two there's, fifteen of them maybe?
Okay, and school district.
So a certain CPA would need Montana-specific information, right? You couldn't contract out of state.
Correct. There are some that will be monthly state, but typically they have to be on top of, and licensed in, in multiple states. And these firms do county, cities, school districts. Any other questions on that one? The third item is OPEV. And what that is, is post-employment liabilities, basically. So what the auditors would love us to do is to be able to engage a firm to determine what these liabilities were, and if there's deficiencies or, I mean, these are unfunded liabilities, so really just recognizing what that liability is to the city. They do ebb and flow. Again, based on our size, we have not engaged in an actuary or with an actuary. Again, there's a cost associated with that. It is something that we could definitely look at, what that cost could be. But there is a few actuaries in the state of Montana, and I'm sure that they would be able to give us an estimate.
Is that something that maybe if we didn't do every year, we could do every three or five years or something just to get a, at least hope we, I'd bring it back in line every so often?
And our auditors do do OPEV entries and things like that. So, I mean, they are accounting for it in our funds, and that is some of the reasons. There are some general accounting principles that are followed as well.
So that's listed here as the name of contact person is the commission, so is that our responsibility?
If you want to budget or would like me to move forward with it, that would be you guys' thing.
Do we have any capacity to fund something like that, at this point within the budget?
Not at this point.
Do you have a rough estimate of what that would cost?
I would guess in the vicinity of twenty thousand dollars, probably, something like that. I know for our auditors, close the book, it's about fifteen thousand. Our audits and our audit contracts, I think right now we're paying about forty thousand, but some of the estimates we got were upwards of sixty thousand for an annual.
But that is something that we, the commission, could think about.
Yes, or at least getting a cost on it, and we have that discussion.
Do an RFP for, for somebody to see what the cost.
Yep. The San Juanana Foundation uses a firm that works with an actuary and stuff like that. So there are a few, right? Anything else on that one? Item four is cash reconciliation, and it is in the revised information, so I'll jump to that one. So again, this is timeliness in our cash reconciliation. Nikki balances a handful of accounts, I get a statement of that, and she balances from STIF to our checking accounts on a monthly basis. And so, they do want that done more kindly. We have had some turnover changes in our payment processing and things like that that have prevented us from getting that as funding, but she understands that that is a priority and is working on that.
So it says that the cash reconciliations will be done by June fifteenth, is that to close out twenty twenty-four?
Our goal is the fifteenth of November, so.
I just, it said will be current by June fifteenth, and that's a long time away. You said the goal's fifteenth, but it says twenty fifth in the report.
At first, we asked the twenty fifth.
Okay. No, it's fifteen.
That is our goal.
So the findings in the, on the audit that this said something about some cash that was, did that, that one's out?
Reconciliation descriptions.
Yeah, two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
Each month, we have reconciling items from accounts that payments come in and we don't know where they go. They could be from Lewis County, Pennsylvania, we get those. We've had bad checks or payments that come in, maybe at the end of the month, and so they're not posted. So we post it in two different systems. We have a cash management system, which is our cash receiving, our POS type system, and then it doesn't necessarily clear the bank on the same day.
Is this considered a priority task at this rate, or is it something that then, if there is something that goes awry, it's set aside?
No, this isn't right.
Is there anything else you want to add?
Is the, so this one too, the, is the bookkeeper gonna be, because I see that on several of these, the bookkeeper?
So the bookkeeper has been training to do more and more of the reconciliation, primarily the clearance fund, which is our payroll liabilities, so that's our insurance and our, maybe our AFLAC or different, you know, those type of benefits. It's not necessarily cash accounts, but she will do various parts of that. On STIF, we balance our, our state's investments and, you know, each month, any overages or any excess money we invest, and then we get interest on that, then it goes back to where we got the funds and things like that. Any questions? Again, the clearance fund, that is a liability, payroll liability primarily. Our audit, again, we want separation and stuff. Our bookkeeper is doing probably about ninety percent of a little bit of this stuff, is that right?
I'm sorry, hold on.
Uh, clearance. So Nikki still does some of those, but primarily it is been passed off to the bookkeeper and it's done right in. Item six and nine are the same item as part of our water improvement project. The engineers were doing all of the contracting. They did not get department certificates from all the contractors, and so our auditors checked that stuff too. And so they were asked to provide documentation. We have the primes, but it's actually the primes that should be getting the subs and that. We have the primes, but it's actually the primes that should be getting the subs and that was not followed. And so there was one that at the time of the audit could not be provided. And again, that's not, that's an actual date prior to the contractual obligation. And so that has not been followed. In working with our engineers, I also will occasionally say, hey, do you have a department certificate for this? Can I see this? And so I'm also spot checking.
Do most contractors know that they need to find the subcontractors?
It's primarily grants funding required. Not necessarily will the contractors know that and Tim could chime in on departments and things like that too. But primarily the funders and especially when they're tax entities. So that is basically that they pay their taxes, that they follow state and federal laws and things like that. And so that's kind of the naughty list. And so if you're on the department list, it's you have to comply with the state's rules, the state's rules, things like that.
I'm telling you, the more sophisticated contractors will follow closely. In the contracting process, what I would encourage is just a checkbox. Has this before the award? As part of the award, do we have that? And if it's not checked, you don't want to ruin the project.
I was gonna say, is there anything the city can proactively do?
Well, you saw it, I mean, in our engineer's recommendation for the last one, which was wastewater project. You saw that they had checked the department. And I mean, they're, they're doing that checklist.
I think the city just needs it. Kind of it's all over marching checklist that includes that, just to make sure this is covered.
Well, and to get copies.
It's a bonding place.
Again, simple checklist with in-house that basically double checks the checklists of those.
There are a lot of places to check the boxes.
Keep checking those boxes.
Number seven is our bond covenants. Again, we all know that that is for the sewer rates and that covenant. We are coming up where I believe in January is the last payment on our sewer, our large sewer loan. And so that bond covenant will go away, but we also have enough in reserves to cover that. So we didn't at the time of this audit, but at this time we do.
So a lot of people know this stuff, I do not. Can you take a moment to tell me what the, this, this specific one means, the bond covenant?
So our funding, our bonds would have required basically a hundred and twenty-five percent of the annual payment. Be kept in reserve. And that's what the bond covenant is. So that if taxes, I mean, there could have been like an economic downturn and people couldn't pay their mortgages, things like that. But the city stays, they would follow. But they, they get paid.
Yep, exactly. Okay, that's the.
And if you, if you don't follow that, you have a risk of defaulting and following.
Okay.
Don't follow. So that's why the auditors, they say, make sure that you're never in a position you can be called to.
But at, at this review, we were.
We've actually been for a little while in the sewer.
Correct, yep. And so that's why we did the incremental increases and things like that. To slowly and gradually add up. We had these big, what is it, Miller? Like an SRF, like a, a loan and bond person come and talk to us about this and why that's important and provided some options. The newer bonds are at a hundred and ten percent. So if we would have refinanced, we could have got that covenant removed and vetted compliance. We didn't. Correct. We already had the funding stream in place to correct the issue.
Okay.
Commissioner, we, because we are so far behind, we have to do a huge increase.
Yep.
That was not taken kindly by the people, understandably. But by putting in that fifty cent a year, I think is what it was, increment now the next five years. We should have a report on that in a couple of years and just see how that's working.
Well, it's definitely, this is less than what it was.
Is that date going to affect June twenty twenty-two? Is that what you said it or are they saying, is that a typo?
So that would have been the first one that they looked at. This audit was from June of twenty-two to June of twenty-three.
And then, thanks guys for letting me ask so many questions. You said that we are almost done paying this off?
Or is that paying our sewer, the plant's loan? Big loan for the wastewater plant is about paid off. And I believe it's either January or June. This upcoming year. And so then we'll have a lot more funds that will go in for capital improvements and things like that. This year, or what kind of our rates analysis was to set aside two hundred thousand dollars each year and continue growing that for capital improvement projects. So we have set aside quite a bit of excess funding to go into maintenance.
And this was, we, we raised the sewer rates.
In twenty-one, I think.
I think it went into effect in twenty-three.
Yeah.
Was it?
February first.
The first year was.
February first, twenty twenty-three.
And but we had. After reasons that we could eventually cover. Then we separated out the commercial by meter and.
We worked behind.
BBUs.
And so we did five.
This is, this is one of those, it's kind of a long fix.
It's better than it was though.
Again, it is resolved at this time. It wasn't quite at that point.
Why wasn't it?
Just timing. Again, we chose the structure that kind of mitigated what, what the exposure was and what the customers or residents would tolerate. And did incremental rather than hit them with a huge increase just to rectify it all in one split.
Any other questions?
And then last but certainly not least is the budget. Uh, the budget is submitted. We did have some information that was not in the proper form. That has been rectified this year. They actually overhauled their whole kind of account, like how they wanted. And I think Nikki ended up having to put everything in an Excel spreadsheet this year. But again, we worked with them ahead of time, coordinated and made sure they got it in their format.
Any other questions on that? Nick, how long does an audit take? Can you come in tonight and think quick?
Uh, they're typically on site for three days here. And again, every auditing firm is different. Some of them do it all remotely, some of them just come in person for a day. Ours are typically three days and they've done more. We hopefully send it electronically, do a bunch of stuff that they can do on the front. They actually look at all your minutes. So we should do like any protocol or something just to see if they catch it or something kind of fun occasionally.
I thought we showed, I know we talked twelve minutes, like the, there's like a new book in the office now, like that they compiled all of the minutes of the meetings. Is that true, twenty minutes?
Um, so they check online if we're the auditors, we get all of our minutes. But we do have official minutes books that are actually your printed off final version of minutes that who, I mean, you sign them occasionally when you run a meeting. But whoever's chairing that meeting actually signs off on the official record.
On Danielle's letter, she said, you may wish to contact the auditor to ensure that your corrective actions address the auditor's findings. Did you, is that done?
We do provide this to them as well.
Do you hear back from them?
Uh, not, oh, yeah, it was because it goes in the report, so. If they're not okay with it, well, the report, the report won't get done, so.
And the report is to the state?
Two last names, the state. And so our audit reports, which I know are not often, they weren't up to date the last time I looked. But all of those governmental audits are available online. There was a couple of years that were missing, maybe it just wasn't up with the technology and didn't look that hard. But any of them are available. Our financial report, our budget and our audits are all online.
Audits are not our responsibility to get there or anything, it's all on the auditors.
So they're contract.
So if they haven't submitted it and all that, that, that's between the state and our auditors.
So it is not the city's responsibility to basically make public?
No, 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 that's, that's not what I'm saying.
To upload it to the system. And we do this all through the state's portal.
Anybody at any time can come in and look at an audit report.
Yep.
That's not a problem. However, it's not our responsibility to make sure that audit report gets to the state and they get it uploaded. We have no capability to do that. Now, the budget is our responsibility to make sure it gets to the state on time and get it uploaded.
But the audit is from the audit company.
Correct.
And our current auditing company is? Well, that's.
Any other questions on the audit and the discussion?
Maybe I'm missing, just for clarifications, you're allowing it to follow to the state. What the date of that presented? Just trying to get, understand chronology.
This, sorry, this was like end of April, this was like end of May.
Can you do that again, sorry?
Uh, the original one was like an end of April.
That's this one?
Yep. And then they were asked that we respond with the additional information and then that was the end of May.
Is there a reason why these were done last spring and they are just now coming to the commission?
Again, it's just the timing of it. In the past, we have, and we have to be careful, but we have opened up kind of the exit interviews. They don't typically do exit interviews anymore to the commission. So I mean, if you guys want us to try and negotiate a time that they could provide that or something like that. We don't necessarily get the final report until it's been submitted. And so it is a tactic.
When would you normally get that, a wish to?
I think they have to have it sent to you.
Well, I, it's my understanding that because we have to have a federal audit, we'll have to have it the next couple of years. Because of our Monday, money has to be in the federal audit clearinghouse by the thirty-first of March. Now, that's to the clearinghouse, that doesn't mean I'm gonna get anything, but to the clearinghouse.
So when is, when is the next, like, set?
Um, our audit, I think, is kind of typically scheduled for January?
January, February, I can't remember the exact.
It usually is a cold one. Citizens request.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not having a brain with the, we had a, my brain was Polly, did you get keep or did you get canned?
We just, we just had a little discussion about evaluation. It wasn't on her contractor. She's still a little over.
And we didn't get all the way through, we were a little unwinded, so we're gonna.
Really, I, I wanna keep you? Go keep Polly?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Get another big mother, is it?
All right. Commissioner's minute, Commissioner's speak up.
I don't think I have anything today. I had an individual on my ward come and talk to me about the increased traffic around Listen Clark in the morning of school days. And they were wondering if there is any thing that the city can do to help manage that implored traffic that's now over there. Primarily with Listen Clark being three thirty instead of two. I also know, or I think, the main road, airport road is identified MDT or is that ours?
It is an urban route, so Birch Street as it goes around, you know, the airport road. I did, I believe the same citizen visited with the other commissioner that wore it. So I did inform Mr. Robertson, Mr. Robertson, that I think that that certain citizen was maybe under the understanding that they were still releasing kids to the church parking lot. And so I dispelled some of those, that it's utilizing Floris. And I know it's made a nightmare because I think I waited for you while you attempted to get in the, Danielle, you have to get our kids to school. I didn't wait for her.
Just wait.
Uh, but I did offer to, I had some interesting suggestions. I've asked the state to weigh in on that and different opportunities. Again, through our traffic planning and a traffic study. I think it would be a great opportunity to do some improvements, but also partner with the school. So I did offer up to me with Mr. Wordsburger as well.
Exact, I, the idea that I was thinking was to do an actual traffic study of that area. And now that it is a little more congested with more people hanging out. It does seem.
Yeah, they took that stop sign down because they're not going to the.
That was only temporary as they had kids dropping off and being picked up at the churches. So they were doing both the Mormon church and then the other church. Yes, thank you. And so that is not being done anymore. They actually are asking parents to drop off and pick up on Floris. And also buses. And so it makes interesting traffic, especially if you're trying to get off of those streets that discharge there.
All of the downhill, so uranium, crystal, Carol Trail, all come into that. And currently that it's just wonderful chaos in the morning.
It is chaos.
And I guess it would be really interesting to see if we could manage that in a different way or encourage traffic flow a different way through there. But it does seem to be very sticky in the morning primarily and the afternoon is less so. So a review of that would be great because that issue will not go away with those three grades in Listen Clark.
And it, it didn't go away with the stop sign.
No.
It has definitely exacerbated a little bit, but there, it's gonna be an issue. And then I think there's some little tweaks that can be done. Maybe some long-term changes to the traffic flows and patterns through there that could be evaluated utilizing a partnership with state or some of the other kind of things that are happening anyway.
Yep. And the, again, the traffic flow is an issue, but also pedestrian crossing. I know there's a lot of kids that start at the top of the hill and have to get across Floris to get to the school. And they do have one identified crossing, two, one on each end of Listen Clark right there. And the school's done a very good job of making sure that there is a crossing guard available, but it is a lot of traffic to manage and a lot of small people moving, like small people do.
One of the stories I shared was something I experienced. And again, I don't think you should go there unless you, your patience is just really good. Like in the morning, I'm just like, okay, it's gonna take a while, I'm just gonna take a breath and not be interrupted. And obviously the cars behind me didn't feel the same. So you've got buses that back it up. And it was backed up probably a block and a half from that stop sign at Birch and Floris. And the car behind me got frustrated that it was, you know, quite a ways to the stop sign and pulled out around about five cars and zoomed up uranium. And it went, and if there was kid or another car, I'm just like, it's not worth it.
And that odd three-way just causes more and more and more frustration right there.
Invisibility of cars and there's not many cars backed up, you know, there, there, and there is kids trying to cross.
Yeah, it just gets worse.
I was gonna say, and oh, when there's ice out there, all those cars that are coming from the top of the hill, just again, I gotta make their way down. So I opened up the door, we'll continue the conversation. Tim and I are both part of the grant organization.
Bridge is back.
Ward three, we've got comments. Okay, that is my commission. Oh, I have one more.
It was a compliment. It's a good thing.
You forgot.
I did. You'll think that, you gotta watch and wait again.
Okay. Sure, Dave, you have a? Just the, of course, the, like, come out to that Halloween fun room and support the civic center and getting everybody excited about that. There, I think there's still opportunities to volunteer, but we want you to participate. There, I think there's still opportunities to be able to volunteer, but we want you to participate. And yeah, and get involved. It's a great cause and I appreciate everything you've shared. I know I shared a lot about it in my report, but sometimes it just feels like I'm just reading all the facts. And I feel like you really brought it to life about what's happening with the civic center and all the good changes that have come up. I thought maybe there was something that I felt that you developed. Is there something that I'm not, like, I'm missing or haven't had yet? But it was great to hear from you and to have. I love having the department heads of facilities. I would love to see more department heads attend our meetings. This is how things get done.
Thank you.
So keep your, don't put your Halloween costume away after the thirty first.
It's a fun thing to search there in and.
Twenty-four more hours and half of that.
I'm done.
Fisher Roberts.
I, I would, uh, I would bring back up the topic of the traffic concerns around Lewis and Clark. And, and this constituent was careful in their thoughts about it. But, um, I can attest to the fact that before there was this much traffic, I personally crept down there and then slid right through the intersection, right to the fence. And, uh, thank the Lord that I didn't wipe out kids or cars. This is an extremely dangerous situation. It will have, it will have accidents this year. And I'm scared that we're gonna have kids injured because they're coming in from three or four directions. Parents are impatient. Buses aren't all there. People are going in every direction. And I can't advise it until you see it. And live through it at between seven fifty and eight-ten in the morning, it is insane. And it's much worse now. I think we need to make it a top priority to, to pull a state as to what they can do because they contribute to this by not addressing the issues at, at the junction there of Airport Road where people.
Or maybe Mount Foshen Junction.
Was it Mount Foshen Junction? Um, I talked to the state about it, mentioned it to people in the state, and they've ignored it. And I think we just need to make it a big hairy deal until something gets fixed because we're gonna get kids that are gonna get hurt. And we're all gonna be sitting here saying, well, we didn't do it well. But somebody's gonna get run over. This year. It's gonna happen. Someone talked to me. I said, "Why aren't they picking them up on the other side? Where you got less traffic?" On the other side of that lot, that huge school. You know, do you know what I'm saying? And I said, "I don't know." Would they talk to the school about that? I think we should inform the school. They, they have a big place. I know they want more space for kids to play. There are spots out there where obviously they could trim that back a little bit. They could create some parking and pickup lanes on what is essentially Airport Road, Birch. They could do some things differently. We all, our community, could do some things differently before somebody gets hurt. Somebody's gonna get hurt. I've seen accidents out there. I've seen people run right down uranium and into cars that are waiting. And the cars aren't, they're all, it's a, it's a contest to see who can get out faster.
And so at this point, there's not been any of those dialogues kind of in advance or anything like that. But that's why I did reach out to the superintendent and the principal of Lewis and Clark.
They stagger pickup or drop off times?
That's what I was just gonna ask. They are, what, five minutes? They are, yeah. Which is why pickup is much better than drop.
Yes.
Because parents, again, the kids do go into school basically at the same time, and parents have to get to work.
And it would be interesting to see if they could do a pull-through drop-off somewhere maybe where they still have open ground. Because that would take all of the drop-off, uh, off of the main roads, which are already very busy because of the main traffic from the hospital area all the way to the high, high school. It's the only way.
So how, I guess the question becomes, and maybe now's not the time, but how do we solve it? What, who could do a study and a plan? Our engineering firm. Who can do a study and a plan? I think, I really think it's in emergency status. It's gonna be icy coming two, two weeks from now, and we're gonna have, we could have a death. We could have a kid role. That's not an exaggeration.
Could the high school also, like, ask their students to not come through that way? Because I know my son, that seems to have that.
It's the, it's the only, like, reasonable way of, it's not gigantic, but you have to.
There's only two, really two options. I mean, for the majority of town.
I know it would be extreme, but it would force traffic patterns in the, the name of the hills area out if, if you closed all of those roads. And that could be a really interesting, chaotic solution. But, and I don't think it would be listened to.
But if we even have upheaval.
Yep. I think the main and, and our road, those, those roads aren't plowed because they're not identified as snow.
I, I just think it's a, if the decision was made to put more traffic on that street, they didn't understand that there was already a big problem.
Yep.
And there needs to be a better solution, especially if all work has just been done there. Why there wasn't a better solution by now, I'm frustrated with the fact that it wasn't come up with. They knew that it was bad before. Now it's getting worse. So I just, it feels like we need to shout from the rooftops, "This is wrong. Let's fix it now."
So you're meaning, are you gonna meet with them or?
I've asked them if they would like to meet.
Superintendent?
Superintendent and, um, the principal of Lewis.
About the state? State?
I can definitely, again, I've done that before and asked for their participation and stuff. And, um, have gotten nowhere either, but I can.
What, what if you?
Have them meet you.
No, what if you made a proclamation that the city's gonna change the traffic flow, period? We are gonna change the traffic flow one way or the other. Do they wanna be a part of it or not? We could make it a one-way street.
Yep.
We could make it a one-way street the other way. We could make it a dead end. We could do a lot of things rather egregiously. Or that would, that would make them very frustrated if they don't address the issue. It needs to be addressed.
Look, we did make it a one-way. What, a one, Florence?
And that coming up.
You could make Florence a one-way the other direction.
Exactly. I was gonna say.
That would have weakened a lot of it.
Yep.
Because right now, the problem is traffic going north of Florence. That's the issue. It's not the southbound. It's the northbound. And if it was a one-way, you would force everybody to go around, get to a stop sign, and meet in a more orderly manner.
And even Airport Road, you know, over the hill, you could make that a one-way over the hill.
That's happened in town. It has to go through.
Again, this is a weird junction.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that is the solution. I'm just saying, you have the ability to muster that interest quickly if you said, "The city commission's gonna change this somehow because we're not gonna let kids get run over."
Yep. So what's the step here? So right now, I have left, and this has only literally been in the last week that this conversation has been.
Just got really bad.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I think we all had patience for about thirty seconds, and then we realized how.
It's not getting better.
Dangerous.
Is it getting bad because more kids are getting dropped off, like, for the beginning of the year, they were walking and taking their bike? And now we're seeing less of colder mornings, parents dropping kids off?
A little bit, but it's only gonna get worse with the weather. And so that's the concern, I think. Uh, so I'll reach out to them. Um, again, I can request a meeting with the superintendent and, um, Mr. Wordsburger, which I think is a great place to start and to start a dialogue. Um, but I can, and if you guys give me some direction, I can definitely say, um, that you guys want to figure out a solution to this, that you don't want a tragedy to happen because nobody did anything about the traffic in this meeting.
I would let you know that I'm available to attend that meeting, uh, to talk about those issues um, and to relay the stuff that's been offered.
Um, so I did not get that letter directly. Uh, that concerned citizens emailed the principal and the principal emailed. So, and as well as, uh, the PTO superintendent.
Yep. So they are. Have a seat now.
Yep.
Is this a parent or is it a person who lives there?
A person who lives in the neighborhood.
Able, I can't imagine just having to witness that.
It, it's not good.
It should be on the other side of that old building.
Yeah. It should be on Birch.
Um, and so what they tried in the beginning, I have a daughter that just, this is her first year there. So, uh, they did try and do buses on Birch, and that was very short-lived for some reason. Um, which would have helped, uh, in not a great location with visibility and stuff like that. Uh, but that was one of the suggestions that I could come up with is a, a bus, like, you know.
Yeah, separating. Yeah, separating the buses from regular traffic.
Any other comments on this? You'll get back to us on.
Hopefully, yeah.
Hopefully, we can.
Is that a fair assessment that you guys don't want to not do anything and chance the traffic?
I think it's a common policy, make a check. Make sure that something is improved.
And so they can partner with us or you guys are gonna do what you feel is best.
We're not trying to be jerks about it, but it's not working, and we're getting feedback. And we don't, we have a responsibility to make sure people aren't getting hurt.
And we are the, the entity that manages the roads. So it is our job to manage the roads.
I have a minute. It also has to do with traffic. So, um, on the way other side of town, so on H Street, um, I've been approached, and they're not even in my ward, they're near board, but they just happened to catch me. People who live, uh, actually on G Street, that development that's there and then further down. So there's this, they, people roar down that street. And apparently, uh, they had somebody actually pass somebody on that road, like.
On G Street?
On H Street.
H one-two, Town Country.
Yeah, yeah, H Street. And then G Street comes through that development. And, uh, anyway, um, the, the sign is probably, I don't know my directions real well, but south, south of that development, south of B. And it says twenty-five miles an hour. But people go fifty-five on that road. And so I was just wondering if there was a way to put, like, more signage sooner or?
So part of that's in the county, and so there is some jurisdictional things and stuff like that. And closest to, uh, the truck bypasses in the county. Um, it, that took an act of Congress to get it all signed to just twenty-five. Uh, but I can tell you that, uh, we can reach out to them and see what the county says and evaluate.
Wouldn't it, but closer towards that development, on H Street, closer to G Street, put signage there? Like, because that is in Ward three, Ward two? Ward one.
Seventeen.
So, I mean, not going harder down to the, the truck bypass that's coming.
We can locate.
I think the key is there are, there aren't a lot of signs, and so if you miss the first one, it's a wide open.
It is. Or if you're wrong, like, through the subdivision, maybe you haven't seen one.
I don't think it's straight. And so there's probably no solid center line stripe and no, no passing signs. And, and twenty-five feels very slow, and so I think people blow it off and just go.
I will tell you, uh, our law enforcement has done a lot of activity and been up there.
And they did say that for the two home people that got the whole, they said that, uh, they had called the police department, what, when this person passed this other person, like, out in open. And, uh, that they have gone up there quite a bit, but they said they could, they could pull everybody over because nobody slows down.
What's it take to get a, like, you know, portable and going too fast?
Yeah. One up there. Yeah, we can do that for a bit and just remind you. I'll get to be very careful with them because then it becomes a challenge to see how fast they go. So we have it blanked out at a certain point, um, but does still document speeds. And then maybe the no passing, just to remind people that you're not allowed to.
Put some speed bumps.
Yeah, and put some speed bumps in.
There are already speed bumps.
They're called, they're called.
Control devices or hot holes.
So it's actually a really good road. I mean, it's really in good shape. It's, because it hasn't been too long since they paved it.
It's, it's a nice road. G Street is not as nice. H Street is a nice straight stretch.
Good street.
Yeah.
And it, it actually, H Street comes out at Snowy Mountain Motors.
G Street. Eighty Street comes out of.
G.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so I'm talking about G Street. I'm so sorry. I was thinking G Street was the one. G Street is the one that people speed on by that development.
All of that.
So.
Is that one even sign?
Uh, it is when you get up to, like, almost to Snowy Mountain, uh, Motors. There's a sign that says twenty-five miles per hour.
But a couple of additional.
But there's no signage. I'm so sorry, you guys. It's G Street. I was thinking H Street and G Street was the one.
They're, they're kind of the same.
Yeah, yeah.
G does the big dip down and up. H is just flat.
And there'll be more traffic, that new gym opening out there, there's gonna be a lot more traffic.
Well, that's where, so G, G Street goes by the new gym. And it's right before the gym that it changes to twenty-five. And then you have a stop sign. You're really slow down. So.
So if there's a way, yeah, we could do something with that, just to, I'll, we'll take a look and, and also work with law enforcement.
Yeah. And they are aware, because like I said, they had gone up there and they were like, whoa, pulling people over left and right and, uh, doing some more patrol up there. But I, I just think it needs some more signage because you might not know. Or you might just be blasting through it. Get across town without that.
Sure. Airport Road.
So, yeah, funny, we have all kinds of traffic concerns this time, so.
All right.
So commissioners, before we close the meeting, uh, we had talked about coming back together. And we have everyone's feeling, but maybe we should move all of this to November fourth.
Yeah, we could do it at another meeting in November.
Really, you have one question left?
We have one question in the summer meeting and, and.
The wire shop council did say they wanted to try.
And I have often enough, but we could do it at the end of the regular.
Maybe it might be possible to, to, if we could possibly meet earlier on for your evaluation on, like, the, at five o'clock or something.
November fourth? Like, five o'clock on November fourth?
Yeah.
I, I could do that.
If they decide that that's the date, that the, the stream.
And a lot of that will depend on when we, if we're available.
I just wanna give, I want, I don't want to be rushed and everyone's.
They were gonna get ready to do that. They have a short agenda.
So why you said we had a short agenda?
I'm just hungry.
And Bron is hungry, so, um, I, I just think everyone's attentive and we will be more productive if we can have some time to. Make some breaks. So tentatively, let's plan for five o'clock on November fourth to meet here um, for the second, the second half, the sequel.
We'll double check, but it should be.
Evaluation sequel. And, um, unless they decide that there's not, they'd like to do on eighteen.
I'm guessing I'll hear from them, but I had an off.
Well, I just couldn't, just going back to just the local traffic thing is fascinating to me because I'm an Indian resident. So we don't keep them in school, but, um, I know in the past, we've, like, formed little subcommittees. Is this something that you feel like would be?
I think, I think the subcommittee would be great. I think Holly needs to.
Well, at this time, I think the two commissioners got the complaints and myself to go to the school. And then if we feel like there's more action, we could read the whole report back.
But if they get enough information back to us, then we can vote and just.
Close every city, street in this town.
Yeah, I, I want to.
You gotta put that in the paper, right?
Y'all are gonna start walking. We're encouraging healthy lifestyle. Hey, that's my job. I'll, I'll, you know, I don't, I'm playing out of this whole subject.
If you wanna experience that, just show up about seven fifty-five.
Yeah, they can pick up my child first and just say.
Seven fifty to about eight oh five.
Seven fifty to about eight oh five.
Start at the top of uranium.
Go get Holly's kid, go to the top of uranium.
And see the opera, just try it.
Nelson's little buddies walking down, like, kids walk down.
It's so cute to, even in the new school mornings, to see the ones coming across over from Wild Rain House, across the Frog Park, and down from the neighborhood, it's, it's heartwarming, that's why I'm patient, it's so cute.
And I don't even. Then you have the teenagers who are on their way to the high school blast up Ash Street.
Yep.
Because they.
Whoa.
Race into school, I'm sure.
That, that was my so much.
They, they slow, and that stop sign on their foot lanes, they don't always stop. It's all small, a little bit, and cruising.
Bringing that stop sign back would not make any difference.
No, I. Because they're not using that size of the street, they're not using Birch at all.
Oh.
And it. So I wonder if you had the kids drop off on Birch and kept the buses on the other side.
The kids come from the catwalk and the neighborhood, so they're coming to Floris.
Anyway.
Anyway, so if you got traffic patterns back on Birch somehow, would alleviate all of that on Floris, and the kids could be able to get there really easily, but, uh, because right now, everything is on Floris.
And Floris is, is a weird cave.
And in the winter, and it's very snowy.
Stuff like that, it gets more complicated, even for the people on Floris.
Yep.
And the school district was aware of this when they were bringing the extra grade level in, and that's why they did this.
I'm sure they weren't, I think that's what Tim said, I don't think.
I don't think they thought about that.
No, I don't think traffic.
And I know they didn't consult with the city, or, I mean, even in all of the, like, oh, we're gonna try this, oh, we're gonna try that. I have not been party to any of those conversations.
But I think since we have jurisdiction over the roads, uh, this is a good place for us to step in and help solve problems before they have it.
And sign up to the fun room.
And, and run versus fun.
Right.
I don't do it, it's just.
Right.